The recording is in progress, so let's. Get going. This is Saturday, May seventh. In the year twenty twenty-two. How did we get here so quickly? And this is a Saturday morning work session. We are going to review the business for Thursday's business meeting. Let me get my screen chair going so that we can look at the agenda together. And we'll, we'll start at the top here. Since we don't have any village administration or officials, we'll roll around to. Eric for a village planner update when he joins us. But I know from planning and zoning, we began reviewing the first, first cuts. Of the zoning or the zoning code rewrite that is underway. It is still. In its very early steps, but, but it has begun. Also, one of our voting members of planning and zoning has resigned. Eddie Bell has resigned. So that is a seat that is gonna need to be replaced. There are two non-voting members on planning and zoning. So the first, the first step is to see if either of them would like to step into the voting member role. And then recruiting a new non-voting member. Assuming that one of those two step up. And next. Meeting date. I don't have off the top of my head. I believe we have a meeting planned for next month. So then. Nikki, anything from MPC?
I need to unmute. Um, they're doing a movie night for our kickoff memorial weekend. They're still learning all the cool things that their website's doing. But aside from that. Getting their pride event really kind of started and, and you know, some concrete foundation on. But they're really concentrating a lot on their events and their website right now.
Sure. Cool, cool, cool. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Uh, let me circle back just a moment, planning zoning. Maybe it's just. A false perception on me or what have you, but it seems like we lose a lot of people from that committee. Like, 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 generally a person a year drops off or so. Do we know why people just, I mean, is it just, oh, this is more time or people like, you know what? This committee doesn't actually get things done. I thought I could do things and the move needles not moving. Do we have any insight into that?
I don't, um, I mean. I know Eddie had time constraint issues. Like, I know he hadn't been able to attend the last. He hadn't attended a meeting yet this year. And hadn't attended because, and this is what I, I joined up in planning and zoning this year, so I don't have any previous perspective. Maybe Eric might. But that I, that I don't know.
Okay, well, if, if nothing else, just knowing that the current person's just like, boy, I signed up for this and didn't realize that I couldn't make the meetings. That's. That's innocuous enough for me.
Yeah. Yes. I think that's, I, that is the current situation. All right, Nikki, you're up for communications.
Um, we just had our meeting on the twenty-first, just to kind of talk about. How we are assisting community with diversity week. We will have three or four different video projects. We have someone from Kenya, someone from Guatemala. I think a Nepali and Indian and then a member of the deaf and disabled part of the community. Just kind of bringing everybody together, you know, showing their Minerva Park, you know, showing how their Minerva Park proud. Lots of different events that, you know, Jason has worked on and we're just trying to get the, the word out. Coffee with council. I'm actually looking for my minutes. It's in June. I know it's. Hold on a minute. One second. June sixteenth. Um, we're gonna do our first chatting with council. It's just gonna be an introductory. You know, what I would say for each member. Um, just have maybe like five minutes introduce yourself. What are you passionate about? Where do you come from? What are you working on in your committee? And you know that, and then just open it up for a Q and A after. That way, we don't have to really worry about. People taking over and, and everybody has a chance to listen to. So. Aside from that, that is all this morning.
Good. I don't know why it feels like it's been this, the Nikki and Brian show this morning, but finances next. So finance committee, as you all are aware. That we just passed the legislation to engage in the TIF revenue financing. Those efforts to close on that deal are underway. Um, after that, the next big thing. Um, is going to be that the tax budget is due to the state in June. So we'll have a finance committee meeting that we orchestrate with. Our new fiscal officer, uh, just to discuss what's in there, we'll have our three readings and then we'll have to get that off to the. Oh, and there does need to be a public hearing for that. So, but I, I've just discussed it with the. With Mr. Will check and laid out a plan for how we can get all that in, so we don't have to waive readings and hopefully not have to pass as an emergency. Uh, that rolls on down to streets.
So we had a meeting with Tiffany, um, I think it was last Wednesday. Um, and with Mike Flickinger. So we talked about getting kind of mostly the focus was. Um, the Jordan Road project and the sewer that's not accessible to us because it is on private property. So we kind of talked about ways in to have access to it because. It is Mike's opinion that that's probably the kind of the biggest problem. Um, and then we talked about maybe doing it in stages where. Uh, we just focus on that which where we think that's the biggest problem because otherwise it's going to be a very lengthy process and we don't want to. Wait for too long to address this whole thing. Um. We're still working on, uh, doing the flow models which came in probably a day after. I think it was like the same afternoon that they came in. Um, and the flow models came in about like what size sewers we need for that area. Uh, so now they're trying to figure out financing for the whole project. Um, so it's kind of like two parts. So the first part, we're still kind of working on as a separate issue and try to get that done as soon as possible. Um, and then the second issue is just, just to make sure that we're doing it right. Um, so we're just gonna stage it basically at this point. So that's kind of what we're working on. Um, the other project on East Shore Court. Um, pipes are slated to be delivered next week and then they're gonna start work probably the week after that. Um. And then the streets assessment is still kind of going. They were gonna start in April, but unfortunately with all the wet weather that they had to delay. Kind of assessing the streets because it's hard to do when it's raining, but it's springtime in Ohio. So that's kind of where we are. Um, so we're definitely actively working on figuring out the Jordan Road situation. Um, so that's what's going on. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
All right, uh, rolling, rolling with the punches here. Uh, Jason Cameron is not here today for a community report. Does anybody else from that committee want to report out for community?
I've been working with attempting to round up a handful of food trucks from diverse, um. I guess you'd say diverse cultural. Uh, fair. And apparently that stuff needs to be done, uh, quite a bit in advance. I'm not having a lot of luck, but I keep sending stuff out. So if I can get one or two for the eleventh, um, that'd be a good deal.
Have you, have you reached out to, I, I know that the mayor is the one who's been doing all the food trucks that have been coming into the village. Maybe she has some personal contacts.
I have the same spreadsheet or sent me. So I've been sending them emails. Asking, you know, if they'd be available on the eleventh and all that good stuff. Um. I'll keep plugging away at it. I know it's gonna be a big thing regardless, but I'll keep plugging away at it.
Very good. Well, since you chimed up, you can, you can keep on rolling through straight for a safety committee update.
Really? Thank you. Um, so safety had a meeting on Thursday, which was pretty productive. We discussed. The, um, I guess you'd say background and context of the shelter house locations. I guess you'd say issues with its location and my mind and I believe other people's minds were put at ease. Um. With the ability of the police to respond to. Um, any future issues and that. There are more than one option we can use to address them in the future. We also discussed. The, um. Uh, those big white painted stop bars. Uh, we got an estimate for that in, I believe, yesterday. It's like four grand or something like that. Yeah, forty-one hundred dollars is what I see. On the estimate, so. Um, overall. Those are the couple of major things we discussed. We also discussed a firework ordinance that will need to be adjusted as to the Ohio revised code changing this on July first. So we can discuss that at some point, but we'll need to jump on that pretty, pretty darn quick.
Great. David, I unfortunately did not make the Thursday meeting because it's just been a crazy week for me.
It's okay.
Um. When it came to the location. And safety concerns of the shelter house was the focus that putting a shelter house there would cause more problems. Or that that area has problems, so it might not be the best place for it. You understand my, my, my difference of, of take on that?
Yes, yes. Um. So.
I don't think it's either David, right? I think chief addressed that.
Yeah. It seems to be a, I don't wanna say chicken or egg situation. Um, but there has been a population in the village that was against the basketball court from the start against. A shelter house added, and you know, that's, they're more than well, they're more than welcome to have that opinion. Um. And you know, they're, you know, living by it. So that's, you know, understandable that they'd have stronger feelings, other members of the community about it, but, um. I believe and correct me if I'm wrong, the people who have communicated with these residents. More, um, recently or more intently than I, more specifically than I have, but. I believe the issue was the, the fear of. Increase, um, in a social behavior or criminal activity stemming from more. I don't know, opportunity or comfort to be there. It's. It's not a philosophy I subscribe to, but. It's definitely a valid one that I can understand.
So just to, if I may just reiterate the facts on from that chief told us at the meeting, which everyone's welcome to listen to. The, the item specific is that we had an uptick of significant incidents in twenty twenty, since we were the only basketball court within a ten mile radius. Uh, twenty twenty-one, there were three incidents juveniles after hours when it was dark. They were moved on. Chief can go into more detail at the meeting. Uh, obviously answer any other concerns or questions from council members that did not attend. Uh, but he has things well in hand and are going to continue the same strategies they implemented. Post twenty twenty to bring it down to, uh, a completely controlled and safe situation at this stage. Uh, he did not have any issues with the shelter going there. Uh, in fact, his opinion, which I share, is that it will actually help the security since you're going to have adults. Uh, present and of course, as I added in, there will be ability to add a camera cheaply to the top of that future structure.
Yeah, that was kind of my thoughts on it. Yeah, as I said, it make the meeting, so I'll use this as my chance to, to stake my things on it. You know. Whereas a basketball court does bring. Sixteen through twenty-six-year-old males into an area and sixteen through twenty-year-old males are, you know. The dumbest, most destructive things on the planet essentially because they just are. Um, I, I don't see the shelter house drawing that crowd in. I don't see anyone sitting around going like, yeah, what do you want to do today? Well, I hear there's a good shelter house down in Minerva Park. Let's go sit on a picnic table. I, I, I don't see that bringing in. I, I could understand if people are like, oh, do we want to put it there? If it's gonna be adjacent to a, a thing that has problems, but I just. Personally, don't see how, you know, a shelter house draws in any kind of. Problem and, and as Eric just said, almost quite the contrary, because you know, if you're having a. Your, your kid's birthday party or your whatever party down there. You're gonna have a bunch of adults saying like, hey, there's kids over here. Knock it off.
I don't think.
That I probably should have showed up to the meeting Thursday to, to point out, but I didn't. So that was my chance.
I know, I, I don't think it's, the, the concept is just because people's against the basketball court. That, that, they just, if it's gonna be there, if we're gonna add a structure, let's just make both safe. That's it. That's the people's concerns. A couple of council people is the one who recommended the camera and I think that would really. Add a level of comfort and resource of making the residents feel safe.
Yeah, let's not think. I think at this point, um. We should move forward with a shelter house with camera included as like a one. Deal. Um, and then another thing is like, we should define what a shelter house is. It's just like a structure with a roof, like nothing super fancy. Um, you know, no bathroom or anything like this at this point, just so there's no confusion for everybody. Um, just basically to get away from the rain or the sunshine or something like that.
And in the, in the past with our, uh, because I know a lot of you, I mean, well. Excuse me, Stacy and Nikki, you're new. Um, the, the closest we came to bathroom talks in the previous year when discussing this. Was some kind of. Reasonably sort of. Like one step over porta potties, like, like a decent porta potty instead of just the little closet one. Uh, the idea being like you got an emergency use restroom, but it's not something anyone's gonna want to hang out and smoke cigarettes in.
Yeah. All right. I think we've, we've.
I don't think we're there. Yeah. But that.
You know, you're saying you're not comfortable with that either. Is that what you were just saying?
My concern is the maintenance of that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yep, I do think there's an expensive of any sort of. You know, bathroom porta potty, whatever that would need to be considered. So, but we can. We, I think we are nowhere near that point in that, and this isn't the time, so we can move along.
Yeah, I wouldn't even like kind of.
I'm gonna put a pause on village committee reports and roll back up to. Uh, village planner, uh, Eric Fisher. Um, Eric, I did give, uh, a planning and zoning. So if you just want to talk about non-planning and zoning stuff. You, 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 we're, we're good for you. Or talk about planning and zoning stuff. I probably got it wrong.
No, sir. I didn't hear it said. I'm sure it was wonderful. Uh, we'll rehash at the meeting if necessary. So. Uh, it was a lot of P and Z code, I think is what we did, and I'm sure you addressed that.
Exactly.
Very good. Um, morning all, a couple of things. Um, quick announcement. So obviously, a successful passage of the financing for a number of projects. Just want to give you some updates on the actual projects, especially the major ones. Um, we have finalized from our construction attorney with Frost Brown Todd, some of the changes. To our AIA contract, which will be rebid, I believe, what I see in my email on Wednesday. Uh, that will go out for bid for a six-week period for the building. Um, and then we'll have a couple of pre-con meetings. Uh, well, a couple, I should say pre-bid meetings, apologize. Uh, that the architects will conduct during that period with interested bidders. We expect to have. I've already actually spoken to a couple of GCs. We expect to have people be able to bid under these better. Um. Bidding conditions, longer terms, uh, and a, a contract that will allow for a certain percentage of fluctuation in the market. Should it come to that, um, which was a primary issue before both of those items. So going out on Wednesday. Uh, and we shall see what happens, but I'm cautiously optimistic.
Um. A little bit, um, in regards to that, my question is, is, do you think that? We'll have more bids, not only from the favorable things, but do you think it's because the, the market has slowed down a little bit or is that a factor?
No, no, market hasn't slowed down at all. We, we've seen prices increase, uh, difficulty. It, it's more matter that they're so busy. Number one, we, we, we had a three-week period before, which was considered fairly normal, uh, previous to this. Um, economic environment. Uh, that was not enough time for people's, uh, professional bidders to, you know, put stuff together. Or will they have professional estimators within these big, uh, big construction companies? There's not enough time given that they were all slammed with requests. Um, so that was a, the other issue was public with public bidding projects like this is that. Um. It is an issue where because prices are fluctuating, uh, to some degree that there's. You know, our, our contracts generally, again, before this, these conditions were occurring, generally designed about a, designed around a concept of not to exceed. The problem is, is six months or eight months down the road, when they get to get to their materials ordered, prices may have fluctuated up ten or fifteen percent. Uh, which causes a loss to the, to the contractor at that point. Um, we have some proposed language in there that are, are a construction attorney approved in this case that will allow for. Um, some mitigation of that should prices exceed a certain threshold that the village would be able to. Um, come in there and, and give them some comfort so that they feel like they can bid and not lose on the job that. No, you know, they, they have to bid and make a profit and they're not here to lose money to the village or the public project. So we have to, we have to make sure that we account for that and we have our construction attorney, Steve Withy with Frost Brown Todd feels we have now properly accounted for that within the contract. Those were the two major issues of why we had no bidders. Well, why we had one crazy bid because that bidder was just trying to account for it. He was way outside the ten percent range, uh, which is why we had to, you know. Rebit. So. That's it in a nutshell.
Part of the discussion previously was that the bidding period.
Bidding period was too short.
Yeah. So is, is six weeks? Because I had thought that standard used to be two months. Is that not the case?
No, I mean, it, it depends on, you know, it depends on project, but typically the people, uh, we, we're giving it right around three weeks to a month because they want to get people in their bid. Moving groove, right? So that we have some things going on. That was three weeks to a month is not enough time out there from our feedback that we talked to people who perhaps were interested but didn't bid. It was a, a problem. Six weeks is enough time. So.
Okay.
Everybody thinks it's fine. Um, so at least people we've spoken to. So we are, like I said, optimistically confident we will get, uh, at least several bids and that'll be good. Um, okay. Do you know the questions? I will then jump into, let's see, there's that one. Um, the, our engineers firm will be, be putting together a proposal for the lakes for you folks to review. Uh, I would expect that'll take probably within sometime by June. And then, um. He will be in with his folks to go over that with you and then, uh, you can. Accept that proposal if you like, and then we can do the planning for the rest of the, the year on the lakes, which would be wonderful too. Um. And then, let's see, I think I forwarded over. I did. Let me bring it up on the screen. I forwarded over what we call a vacation of right-of-way request. Um. Oops, I need to share.
I can, I can put it up on my screen if you want.
Wonderful. That'd be great.
I have it.
I do. You, you put the arrow up. That'll be.
Yeah. Give me two shakes. Oh. Is that big enough?
I don't have anything. I'd have to, you have to think, you have to cancel the current share and share the other one.
Oh, no, in the, no, I just dragged it into my screen. You can all see it now.
I have, uh, agenda.
You have agenda? Okay. Well, then I will do exactly that. Give me two seconds.
Yep, yep.
Oh, I know what happened. Stupid technology.
Love it.
There you go.
Okie dokie. Um, you could close that CAD file section right there. Uh, the, right in the middle, uh, on the screen, there's a little arrow that points to the right. Uh, between the two. Dialogue windows there. So when you've got the map up and right to the right of that, yep. Yep, thank you, sir. Wonderful. Okay. All right. This is, yeah, and I'm, I apologize because I also had the Franklin County map on my side to show, but that's okay. This will be sufficient. Um.
You would rather spare on your side, you can. I just thought it.
Oh, yeah. If you could, yeah, that way I can drive and I could, I can go back and forth between things. Thank you, sir. Let me just do it real fast. Okie dokie. Here we go.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor Hughes.
Yeah, morning, Mayor. Okay. Everybody can see that, I assume. This is a request from, uh, the fit-offs. Now, what, what happens in this case? Uh, is right of way. Unplatted or unutilized right of way, and you should be able to see the Franklin County website. So this section here is an unplatted piece of right of way, right on Minerva Lake Road, you know, basically across from the entrance to the pool. Yes, to the pool. And. You know, a long time ago. When they plotted this in the fifties. You know, this, there's, we have several of these in existence. You know, obviously the golf course came up here, so they put this in thinking that one day there'd be more houses here, which they were right. Just didn't design out the way they had planned. So. This area here is public right-of-way under state law. The council has the ability, uh, and this is a semi-common request in other councils where we've got dead right-of-way like this. To where you can divide up the right-of-way. Um, and. By law, it goes back to adjacent owners. Uh, in this case, there are three adjacent owners. We are included as we have reserve A right here. Um, the fit-off and then the neighbors over on this side. And actually, there's a small sliver as I bring back up the other one. Uh, small sliver, which we'll have to account for, uh, here for this neighbor. So you can see that there's this little piece here. There's this piece. And there's this longer winded piece going back to the thills. Now. The reserve, I, when I went through this kind of request from them, I made sure, I wanted to make sure that for future purposes, we had the ability to. Utilize the right-of-way and kind of create a path at some point that would connect to reserve B. Don't know if that'll ever happen, but again, given that we've got. Uh, potential money on the table to make that happen. We want to leave all options open. In this case. The current ownerships here, uh, primarily it's the fit-offs have been, you know, grooming and mowing and doing all kinds of things to this is, it's adjacent to the property. We technically are responsible for care of any of, anything within the right-of-way. So. Um, we're supposed to be cutting and mowing and doing that, and he has been doing that over the years. Uh, and there's a, there's a history with, um, him and the village with doing it and of some people feel one way and some people feel another way. I'm here simply to present an objective request, uh, which is not unusual. It, it happens again where we've got dead right-of-way essentially in different villages and cities across the state. Um, alleys, anything like that can be vacated and part of it goes back to, um. Adjacent owners. So. That's what's in front of you. This is a, you know, I. They wanted to put in the request. We don't have, since we don't do this every day, we don't have a formal permit system. So I asked them to go ahead and just submit. What you see in front of you. We can put that up within, um, you know, as they've requested, you'll have an opportunity to review that over three readings. Uh, you can vote it up or down after the third reading. Um, if it goes through, then they will prepare the proper, they'll pay for the survey to prepare the proper meets and bounds. Uh, and then it gets filed with the county and these pieces go back as shown to each of the, uh, adjacent owners. Um. That's it. I'll take any questions regarding it. And like I said, you've got, uh, three, you'll have three readings to discuss and another work session to go over any concerns or questions you've got regarding this.
My first question is. It was my understanding that residents. On either side of these, um, undeveloped right-of-ways that our code indicated that they were responsible for the care. For the mowing and what have you.
I would, I would argue that. It's usable right away. First off, so in the other words, it's improved right of way where they're responsible. Um, and we can, we can get that finer detail point from a technicality and a discussion with legal counsel. Um. But I have not seen that enforced like that across my career. Because typically, typically if we're making them, in, in those cases, I would then go back to the same argument that. If we are, feel like we're enforcing that upon them, then we definitively should. If we're never gonna use the right-of-way. Right? And this is, this is the criteria that villagers and cities look at it. If you're never gonna use the right-of-way and it's in an unproductive state. You should just vacate it back to the adjacent owners. They can fully care for it. And they also, they're, then by pay property taxes on it. So that's how I would kind of. Put, put that forward.
Hey, um, well, I, I know I'm reasonably certain we as a village have enforced that in the past because. I'm pretty sure if you ask councilperson Trusta about the, didn't mow the, I improved right-of-way adjacent to her property. Um, she would gladly remind you that the village has enforced that on others.
And I would say this is a good time for us to talk to legal counsel and make sure that we're doing it correctly.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
It's not me that made her do it.
Oh, I know. I wasn't saying it was you. I was just saying that I, I know that this has been a thing in the past, so we should make sure that we're doing it. Um, another question I have is that um, obfuscated by those trees in that aerial view, I believe. Is some sort of a, uh, I don't know if it's a drainage ditch or if it is an actual. Part of the waterways. Um, part of my concern in doing this would be that. These slice of, slice of right of way that we, it looks like we would be giving up might. Curtail our ability to make that walking path that you mentioned because I don't know how we could. If we, if, if it's a waterway that we can't disturb, I, I think that we, we wouldn't be, we might not be able to do that. So I also. Would like some more on that.
Valid, valid point and question. What I will point out is that prior to right of way, uh, again, it's a technical item, but typically what we do. Is in the assessment, when the meets and bounds are put forward, any easements that may be required. For continuing to maintain any particular infrastructure or any particular swales or anything of that nature would be. Incorporated into the final document to be recorded, uh, which all parties have to agree to prior to receiving uh, property from the municipality.
That solves my issue then, because I was concerned if we ever wanted to do path in the future, that would kind of.
Yep.
Help us. So that, that'll leave any concern of mine.
Yeah, we'll finish that. We'll finish that in part with, with legal counsel. He has to fully review this as well. Uh, I will. Be out on site to reassess and I will talk to our engineer. We'll make sure that we get what's necessary in documents if council chooses to approve this. So. Just so everyone knows.
How does affected part of their driveways in it play into it? Like, do the flanigans then have to maintain part of their driveway? Like, how does that work?
Well, uh, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, please?
That parcel of land, like, isn't the Thidoff's driveway part of it there?
Well, yes, that would be, so if it goes back to them, then it's full, right now they have a very long driveway within. Right of way. Another interesting aspect of this long ride of way, anytime that we've got driveways in right of way. Technically, it's a, it's a privately maintained, you know, driveway within the public rest space. So actually. Anyone and their, their brother can go and just sit there in the vehicle and they, they, you know, can, you could even. Could even, I guess technically block the driveway until we sign it. I mean, there's some uncool things that. You know, from a technical standpoint, this leaves some window open for some, for some shenanigans. It's better that we, you know, again. That they get this section vacated back to them. So the majority of their privately maintained driveway is outside of the apron within the public right of way. And this is the apron within the public right away, just like everyone else's. Um, under these current conditions, there's a long stretch of it within what is right now public right of way. And again, anytime in the village, we have the opportunity to correct this, I would always argue that we should in some way correct it. We do have other people using their driveways in public. Unimproved right of way, but it is right of way. Not, not private ground.
Um, I guess my only thought on it, and I think it's been said, but, but I'll join the echo chamber. Um, I, I, I really think whatever it was five years ago. When council turned down MI's offer to build us a path connecting. Minerva Lake Road and whatever that is, it's not Black Sycamore, it's whatever it is. Green line way. Thank you. That when they said, no, we're not going to do that was a huge mistake.
Um, I don't disagree with you. I don't recall, yeah, Mark and often admit, I don't remember. Actually, I'm kind of surprised by that. When did, that would have occurred, I guess during my tenure, because I don't recall that specific request. I know there were other ones, but maybe I'm just. Not remembering it.
Is the one vote I've missed in my, my years on council.
Oh.
Um, and I, it's a big regret of mine and I can tell you that it came down to both. Uh, both adjacent residents uh, made deep and heartfelt pleas to block it.
Oh, I'm gonna have to go back and listen to that. I, I don't know if I was there. I must have been.
I, I don't recall if you were there or not, but I know that both. Uh, both residents on either adjacent side made deep and heartfelt pleas.
Okay.
To block it. And my guess is, because again, I wasn't part of the final discussion, because I missed that meeting. Uh, silly vacation. Uh, but uh, yeah, my guess is that that is why it, it didn't happen.
Okay.
Which lea- which leans into my last concern in this is that.
Let me finish real quick. I'll finish and let you know. Um, is, i- it is my firm belief that we need to rectify that mistake and put a walk-in path.
Okay.
So that people in the new build section aren't walk in a quarter mile down the street to come back a quarter mile back down the street to get to the pool.
Okay.
Um, we have the right of way there. Uh, you know, we're part of the TIF, yeah, part of the TIF money, the whole thing was. Let's, let's enhance and improve the village experience. And as much as I can understand the two residents like, oh, we don't know that we really want people walk in a sidewalk going on that side of the thing and increase traffic. I, I get that. I understand it. But I, I look at the 200 houses that it benefits and say. You know, needs of the many, needs of the few and whatnot.
Sure. Yeah, we.
Giving it back as long as we keep enough to put a walking path.
Yep.
I'm all good for.
Yeah, we, there's some topo. We would have to kind of come across, um, let me bring that back up here one second. Sorry, I'm still up. All right. There is some topo here. Regardless of how MI was, they would have had to develop the path in a similar way. It would have had to come. Because of the way this, um, put up the other one. Be a little bit of an older area on that. See here. Because we've got this, you know, the stream that runs kind of through here. We have to kind of come this way. And you'd have to kind of come around on this green space and there's a little bit of topo. It's not that we haven't built, you know, or MI hasn't built pathways along topo, but you have to kind of make it a little bit of winding pathway. Avoid that and kind of come up and then connect to the thing like this. So it's, it's doable. You would never be able to come kind of like. This because of the stream through here anyways. Um, and then I had, a way I had it drawn out as we cross somewhere right here. And that way they're on this side of the stream and then they're, they're here and we can work on some other pathway across the odd intersection right here, but. Um, the, the crossing point is right about here in this region. So, and that's roughly what I have. Estimated on there. We'll make sure that we go through. We'll make sure that we go through this with obviously other professionals such as the engineers to confirm a couple of things. Uh, and I'll have the, you know, some reports back to you on that, but we, this is about the crossing point of the stream right here. And then right through here. So that's how it would conceptually run.
So it seems like it'd be split halfway fairly and not undue or, or you know, not unduly. I, I hate to say close to either property owner that's split more down the middle.
Uh, that's typically, that's typically the way it's done because the right of way is here. So the split is typically done. Right? You see how our property is here? We're, we're an adjacent property owner too.
Yeah.
They're here. It gets split halfway. So that's, that's how it's done. Once we get to here. It gets weird because obviously now we have a triple property owner, but we also want to maintain um, opening. So to be fair, we then, you know, split at a midpoint. The engineer drew that in kind of where that midpoint line as it gets split here and we keep this part of the right of way. You know, current, uh, so then we can obviously add our pathway of some future point. So that's the thinking at least.
I, I think I've seen heads nod and, and I've heard some reasonable agreement that. A path here could be a priority, right? Would it make better sense to. Put a pin in this request and tell that pathway has been built and then we wouldn't be limiting ourselves in the where and the how, right?
So it's, it's possible. So I would say, look, we'll put a first reading on. We can table it by the third reading if that's the feeling of council at that moment in time. We'll be able to answer certain questions during this process, i.e. Are they already required? Is it fair to continue to require? Should they be required to maintain this even if they, you know, and, and. I would say, let's get those questions answered as part of the process. I'll be able to get a preliminary back from the engineer. Uh, and then if it's council's wish by the third reading to then table it, turn it down, accept it, you can make that decision. You know, the request has been. Has been put forward. It's fair to the resident to put the process forward and get to that point. So.
Yeah, with the maintenance wise, we need to treat everybody equally. That's, yeah.
Then I would say, uh, in half response to you, Brian, I'd be okay just with plans drawn up, not. Not a final go ahead on a project when I know that's kind of a half go ahead anyway, but yeah, like, okay, we have plans. And yeah, so if we wanted, if and when we do the walkway, we know where it's going to go. We know given this land back's not. Excuse me, affect it. That's, that's far enough along the project for me to, to be able to consider an approval.
Here you are.
All right, let's see what we can get done.
Without that information, I'm going to be a no vote on this just because I don't want to then. Six months later find out, oops, we, we shouldn't have given up that. That yard of space, because man, those three feet are really what we needed to do what we want to do and now we don't have it.
Yep. And there could be some other, there could be some other renditions to this, right? So that's why I say it's a good time to explore exactly where our bounds are. This is as a preliminary concept is drawn up as fairly as it can to meet the requirements of the law. So. But there are other possibilities in how we handle this. Perhaps they, you know, here they get it and it goes like this, right? The line goes here to here to keep their. Apron in it. Maybe you need some extra stuff here. We can, we can adjust this, I think, to some degree and we'll get all those questions answered by the third reading. And if we need to table it at that point because something's not quite done yet, or they've got to wait a few months, I think that's a, a fair thing for council to decide on.
Well, how much is this going to cost us in order to get to a third reading to do all these assessments is my.
Well, this doesn't, this stuff doesn't cost you really anything. They've paid for the surveyor at this point, right? As, as they should. I will talk to, I will talk to Mike. Um, you know, it's, it's still, it's still the residence, you know, it's still a residential request. It still goes up on a reading. Um, council again can vote it down, table it or vote for it at the third reading. Let us get you some answers. Um, and if there's going to be an extreme cost, you know, to, to do a preliminary plan that may not be. Necessary, that, that gets into higher costs than just having the engineer and someone, you know, and, and me walk out there. See what's necessary, draw up a very rough plan versus getting into extreme, you know, surveying costs and things like that, which will be necessary. You know, to put this into um, uh, into a, a, a buildable plan situation. And we're not, we're not there yet. I think we can answer the vast majority of these questions without full plan sets. For a future path. I think we can do a conceptual and we can, you know, get questions answered and give you enough comfort to vote a way that you want to.
And then this whole request, was this due to their, like, the apron maintenance mostly? Cause I know they were having trouble with that. Was that like the basis of this request?
No, I think, I think that's, you know, that, this is a, a part of that, right? So this is, uh, this not, this is their maintenance. Of their private roadway anyways, right? I think that solves a gray area problem. You know, this is just more of a technical issue from my standpoint. It solves an issue of putting it fully within private property as much as possible, right? Cause this is not an apron right here. This is private roadway within a public right of way. So I think that's, that's an issue. Right? But it's not the primary item behind the request. The, the basis of the request is they're already doing a ton of maintenance over here anyways. Um, if we are not going to use the right of way, okay? Then, you know, we're not going to build a road in it. We're not going to do that. Then it's a fair request to say, hey, village or city. Vacate this back to me, right? I, I'm, I'm already caring for it. You're never going to use it. Put it into what we consider a productive piece of ground, right? Um, residential, commercial, otherwise. And so that's the basis of the request. It's a reasonable request. It happens regularly in other. Municipalities that are larger than us. So to solve these kind of dead right of way issues. Like I said, we'll have another work session. We'll have some answers for you in a month. Um, before the third reading. So we can, we can have a, a, a more lively discussion at that point based on what we've put in front of you.
I will say, uh, getting our engineer and maybe even you, although nothing personal, mostly our engineer. Signing off on a, okay, we can do this and still have room for a walkway is, is enough assurance for me that we can do it.
Understood.
That's just my personal belief. I don't, I don't, I don't need construction plans. I, I need an assurance like, yeah, we can do, because. It is a good point. Like it's, it's land that we're not using. They're maintaining, they might as well have it. As long as we still retain enough, enough uh, footage there to get a path and let people get to the pool more conveniently.
Yep.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Copy that. Very good. Okay, uh, that is all I have, I think, for the day. Oh, I think David, one item that was, uh. Was brought up at safety committee meeting, if I may, was the need for legislation. Uh, as we discovered, my chief and myself had gone through this due to incidents we're having with um. Dogs, people not cleaning up after dogs, especially in the new area. We found in our review of the codes. Uh, and the police don't really have anything that they can use that's clear unlike other municipalities. So we are going to. Uh, put something together, um, like other municipalities to put in front of council to approve fairly quickly.
Excellent.
We're going to try to get it under two, we're going to try to get it to readings in an emergency, a wave of readings if everybody's good with that. So we can put it on the books. So.
Excellent, yeah.
And chief will be there to answer questions specific to other folks about this and we'll get something in front of you here on Thursday.
Right. Was there, Eric, did you have any other items to report on?
No, sir. Unless someone's got another, something specific, uh, I think we're good.
All right, then, uh, councilperson Marugarit to legislation with you.
Yeah, give me two seconds. I was just in the process of pulling up the agenda. Um, I will say first off, we do have legislation. That's going to be coming up, uh, from some residents who want to uh, annex some of the public right of way. Uh, since we're not, oh, sorry. Um, that bought me the time I needed. Um, the main thing here is the levy. Which I'm looking at, we have time, so we're good. Um. I just had a whole conversation in my head. Um. We now apparently have paperwork back from Franklin County. So twenty twenty-two fourteen's going to be. About putting the renewal levy actually on the ballot. Um, people will be happy to know as I look at it, it looks to be scheduled for the full three readings. Um, so. We, we got that in time to do that. And that's pretty much all I have for legislation is we're moving ahead with that. We're also looking to pass finally our uh. Supplemental appropriations. That's the one where, you know, there's some money for the pool party. There's the taking back of the double payment for the firefighting monies. But nope, not a lot going on right now.
Okay, I have some additions.
Except for Tiffany has some additions.
Okay, supplemental appropriation might be adjusted um, based on the safety meeting of wanting to do the. Uh, stop bars. I sent everybody, I believe the quote for the stop bars to be painted. Um, so there would be legislation to approve that since i- it's $4,000. I would just like to put that in front of you guys just because. Um, so we would do legislation, add that before Thursday. Um, it's Paul Peterson, same person that I used two years ago, or I think it was three years ago, actually. Um, so there would be legislation with Paul Peterson and then adding that amount of money if we need to appropriate money for this project. I'm not sure. Um, only because I haven't had a chance to talk to um, the finance team yet. So if we need to add it, we may add it. And you guys can decide whether or not you want to have it on there or not. Is there anybody completely opposed to doing the stop bar painting? Okay, so I'm going to have them go ahead and make sure legislation is ready to go. Um, that way we can again do the three readings and not pass it as an emergent. I mean, it's not an emergency. So let's get the readings going this week. And that's it. I don't have anything exciting.
Um, Mayor Hughes, if funds do need to be appropriated for that, I do think it would be appropriate, no pun intended. Uh, for it not to be added into this, this supplemental appropriation. It would be better to run. A separate concurrent appropriations, uh, supplemental appropriations ordinance.
That's totally fine because we're going to have the three readings anyways. So.
We're going to, we're going to go three readings and not pass as an emergency. There's plenty of. We're going to go three readings and not pass as an emergency. There's plenty of time to do three readings with appropriation for it.
I'm assuming they're watching that, or they will watch this, so they'll, they'll hear this. If not, um, I'll shoot them an email and just let them know. Um, to start another appropriation for the first reading and we'll get that one started for the first reading to do the stop bars.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, Council President Wolf, could you, uh, let my second request in? There we go, nevermind. I just need to switch devices.
Yep, you're fine. Ooh, we got the double. All right, yeah, anything else from, uh, from legislation? You're muted, councilperson Bruger. Mark, you were muted, so I'm, I'm going to assume you said no and, and you can give a thumbs up if that's the case.
Yep, no, I'm fine. I just, uh, now I'm on a different device.
Got it. All right, then moving on. Anybody have any old miss business to address this morning? Once going twice. All right, anybody have any new business to address this morning? I love an expeditious meeting. Uh, then I am going to, uh, call for an adjournment. Everybody, uh, have yourself a very wonderful day. We'll see.
Happy Mother's Day to those of you who mothers.
Yeah, happy Mother's Day for anybody, uh, for whom that applies. Uh, and I guess have a good, happy Mother's Day, even if you, doesn't apply to you. I'm okay with you. Have a good day.
That's right.
Yeah, all right. We'll see you all next time.
Yeah, everyone. Good thing I, uh, switched devices to log on to my other virtual meeting for the last thirty seconds.